Yeah, he was here and then he stepped in and said, I'm not gonna be with Mike. Yeah, we're three fifty-nine. Very good, you guys.
Thank you.
And if you leave one for ten. Okay, it's four o'clock. I called a session, emergency session of Van Zant County Commissioners Court, Wednesday, June the sixth, twenty twenty-one, at four P M. The Van Zant County courtroom is an emergency session. Notice was posted prior to lunch, been posted over four hours. So I called a order, announced form is established. All members of court present with the exception of Commissioner West. He is not able, he had a prior commitment and notified me he would not be able to attend today. For item number two, public comments. Scott, anybody sign up for public? No one signed up for public comments? We'll move to item number three, discuss and consider local agreement with Fannin County to house Van Zant County inmates. I'm sorry, Franklin County. I got a call this morning or from, from the sheriff wanting to come by and visit. The, him and Craig Shelton came by. We had a good visit. We've got a situation of overcrowding of the jail. And they had talked with, they check and you and feel free, you can go ahead. Note, let, let the Commissioners Court know what counties you contacted, how many we tried to. And you can come over, you can come over here if you want to.
Hey, each of y'all a handout and I've got it listed on here, but I'll just kind of tell you what, what transpired yesterday. Lieutenant and I were talking. We had, it was nine people in the holding cell and we didn't have any beds placed for them. So we got to looking at what we could do. And we called Henderson County to see if they could take some of our inmates. Henderson County said, no, they weren't able to take them. They're totally full. So we contacted the counties listed on here, Henderson, Smith, Van Zant. Henderson County, they were full. We contacted Smith, Colton, they were full. Contacted Upsher, they said they couldn't take any because their houses were wood, very cast. Russ, Greg, Hopkins, Anderson, and Cherokee, they were totally full. They were sent another inmate. You had to make this fake anybody. So we're trying to figure out what we could do. And we had, by the end of the day, we had thirteen inmates. We didn't have any beds placed for them, all male inmates. So made a decision, opened the back jail up. We called two officers in, one who worked from six last night, six this morning, and we had another committed six this morning to cover through six today, but we can figure out what we're gonna do. We did contact Franklin County, the sheriff, Rick Jones, who's a great guy. He said, man, we can take fifteen. That's all we can take. So I said this morning, if we take fifteen to Franklin County, that left us one bed. So by the end of, I put it here, by the end of this meeting, we probably have eight beds. Drop one in, I'm suing, I'm actually, I'm suing your judge. So my proposal was to present this to court to try to get overtime pay for the detention officers that come in on the day off. We've had several quit, one two weeks ago, they worked fourteen days straight and twelve-hour shifts. He said, just killed his family life, burned out, young, young guy. So they're not looking to work for cop up. We're trying to burn the top time, get it down. So what's aggravating a lot of the guys is they'll earn this top time and we tell them, hey, you gotta go burn this, burn that. They're saying, well, we, I earned it, I should be able to take it when I walk too, so I can spend time with my family. So nobody's willing to come in anymore. Even on, put them on first call, they won't answer the phone, they're just more out, they don't want to do it. Lieutenant talked with a couple of people, people could play the overtime. Would y'all come in and work? You gotta pay overtime, time and a half, some of your check on each paper. The ones that she talked to all agree and yes, be happy to do that, because I can see my money and makes it worth me coming in and working twelve-hour shift on the day off. One guy actually said, how many days? I work every day, I'm off. You know, I'm getting paid. Yeah, we need you, certainly can. So if we could get people to come in on the days off, you know, we can get fully staffed and up, staffed enough to run the back jail. We can house, right now, the way we figured it out. We can house, we've got forty-eight beds back there, back jail, which three pods, twenty-four beds per pod. And Lieutenant figured out today, the food we can put back there, minimum, and reclassification of some of the medium that would fit into the minimal category. We can free up, uh, new running bags. Still have twenty open beds in the back, now twenty-four male beds open in the main facility. So we can make this move instead of leaving forty-five beds total. So that way we wouldn't have to ship everybody out. We still have fourteen in Henderson County, they're females, one male that can't bring back. But we've got nine female beds open. Six female, so we've got six female beds open, so we can take up six more. And then we're gonna have a bench for females, I don't know if Frank can kind of protect those or not. So that's pretty much my proposal. I wrote it all out for you guys to read.
Both are great questions.
Yeah, okay. And anyone, just open, I'm, we're open for suggestions.
Yeah.
Let me add, it's kind of both agenda items being presented at the same time. So by doing the overtime thing, that, that hopefully is a, is a long-term solution while we get more people hired. Start to do some applications, we could get job fairs and put some place, so we got to receive two more applications today. We're trying to expedite that process where you hire somebody, Tico does require that we go through a certain process prior to hiring them. So those take a little bit of time to do it thoroughly correctly. But that, like I said, that's one part of the solution. The other thing is to sign that there will, in a local bring up in Franklin County. So we have a backup plan in case we do still exceed the number. It's the temperatures he does, so the people's tempers. And I think that's why we've got an influx of inmates coming in the last few days. In addition to that, I know that some of them, we're gonna look at and try to see if we can get PR bonded. But unfortunately, a lot of the prisoners, most of the prisoners we have are either, you know, high-risk prisoners because of the nature of their offense being a sexual offense or violent crime of some sort. So it's difficult, we hate to turn loose in the street, but once we release them, whoever signs up PR bond, if they go out and do something else, that kind of falls back on them. Why did you release them? So we have to be very careful who we release out of our jail. We've got several people there that need to stay there.
Okay.
And so unfortunately, it's not just a problem here in Van Zant County, this is a widespread problem all across, we know of these taxes, we conduct all these other facilities. And they're having the same issues we're having. I'm not sure what their solutions are, but I don't, I don't want to wait around. This is something that, once we exceed that capacity, then we're violating jail standards. When we hold them, we can only hold them for twenty-four hours in the holding cell. They have to put it, sell. So that's what we're doing on our end.
Well, I talked to Josh, Judge Winters, this morning, right after, after speaking with you. And I thank Josh, you, Judge, I'm sorry. You signed fourteen PR bonds?
We did. The sheriff's office went through. The sheriff's office went through and our staff looked and see who we could. And that'd be quite necessarily fourteen inmates, but it does, fourteen charges, some of them added to charges.
Eleven inmates, okay.
That, that's a lot. I think that there are some like that, that if we keep watching, we can deal with better. Seems like we're returning, but our software is, is some issues being able to keep track of the, or keep track of the inmates. The way our court now has to go and figure it out is through the public website. You go on the public website and click on each individual offender, one at a time, look at their charge. Hope that the website has all of the charges listed, which maybe, maybe not. Usually the not is a blue warrant or a brawl, which means nothing. So if we PR on your criminal charge, all we're doing is depriving them of credit on that case while they continue to sit there on the blue warrant. Go down A to Z to find out if any of these might be our codes and then throw them on next year.
You have justice solutions on your computer?
No.
And you'll get the justice solutions icon on your computer, I'll show you how to report yourself before you go to jail.
Liaison to the company, tell us that we don't have privileges to you.
I'll give you whatever privilege. The bigger privilege would be get rid, get rid of justice.
What I have comparison is, in my criminal practice in surrounding counties, most of them, either the software or there's some sort of agreement that somebody just put on at some point, because they're asked. They had a regular, you know, here is a list of who's coming into the jail on this day. The way that we know most of the time if someone's arrested is we get a checkmark form that's back to us. But we only get that on, right? If we don't, we get those if, if the person was arrested in Harvard. So this NTR, repudiation probation, NTA, due date probation, a court forfeiture warrant, something along those lines, something that I reached for a quarter on. And that's, that's simply a notice. But if it's a new charge, which is a lot of what we found today, somebody gets arrested on a new charge on the side. Only in case of fire, we would be aware of it, we're not aware of it. And they can sit there forty-five days on parole dressings. And log in some PR on that fifteen, that's, I thought, so that's thirty days that they can pay for unless you just go through regularly and look at every, every single one. So if access to the software helps that and, and maybe for daddy, maybe you have access to it. So maybe if we have similar access, that would also.
So my question, guys, is how did this happen? And why did I not hear about it until we are fifteen people? I found out about three o'clock yesterday. Why did I not hear about it until we are fifteen people? I should be hearing when we are ten short, but there's things I can do. So how did this happen? I mean, did we have a big brother plus that, that was twenty people came in today? Or was there a step program where we had a bunch this weekend? How did that?
Well, we're never more than, we're, we're less than ten beds to come on the day. Every day, we're just juggling act every day, about three and five open slots. It's not just here, it's all across these Texas counties. There's some jails out. I have to know, they were only seven, they don't do.
Oh, but you weren't doing. And they, and let me, let me say this, they didn't have authority from me or him or the other judge to be that. They had authority to PR on basically your job.
We're just, we're thinking about these. Very little, you know, but obviously taking back and forth to Henderson County, obviously. Problem is, when you sit on the outside panel, you're supposed to take the doctor, you're supposed to pay for it, you're supposed to draw all these things. You gotta have a person pretty much drive us back and forth to Henderson County and the doctor back.
No, also, we're all under, we're never lost in this good side. Invested for this long, so we've got, I have, I've been seven shirts, so. Then rock. It's still, Charles, they're not setting anyone at all. They're fully, they're, they're in this, these types of areas, same situation.
I mean, I don't, we have all, we want to suicide somebody, they have taken some, or they're taking all, but that wasn't great. Take three hours. Three, four hours, just taking very long. So the jails, also, so. Place to have. Be able to stop at the jail, that's the question.
But that, but that was one of my questions when I spoke with them this morning. Have you talked to Tonda? You know, because that's where I'm going first, you know?
So in some counties, um, and I'm talking about ideas, they ask for ideas, I'm talking about ideas. Yeah, I, I'm like, I practice in a lot of other places, including here. In some counties, a lot of misdemeanors have standing bonds. They don't have to wait till the next morning to sue them. They can bond out thirty seconds after they bond in. That's how that works, they're bringing hot, jam, turds, and that's it. They bond out, they, they should bond out. Smith County, five hundred dollars standing bond on a D W I course.
That's true. It's, there's a misunderstanding of, from people about the difference between magistrate and the right man. So in theory, that works so long as they've done it, their right process is solid. And they cross that bridge where possible, they fall best.
I think it'll take a multitude of things, because it's all this process now. Take, work, there's attorney, judge. I'm honest, I have the overtime bill, but I'm guilty of, I'm guilty of a lot of these things. I mean, when we get scum, work out and you see, oh, we're having a bit to take care of there, creating a space for people in.
We have no record of weekend commitments, everyone's trying to have their, their own father, Tommy, it kind of rules the laws. But, yeah, we can admit some counter, but then because of their classification, they are not from Georgia, they're Vegas. Well, if I knew that, I am sure we'd be open to people, weekend commitments, but that's the first I've ever heard that.
Well, what, what if you took care of that?
So if we get to the point, are we supposed to call you or the judge and say, hey, don't send any more weekend commitments? We cannot take them, we can't take them?
Absolutely. I'll fashion my plea board some other way. I mean, I don't.
There, there are plenty of options if you know that's the thing. And I think that's the frustration is, if you're really at that point where five people, one way or another, could make a break. And we know that, then that changes recommendations on what to do about bonds. If it's on the edge, then all of a sudden it gets pushed one way or the other. On these weekend times where people are doing some time on weekends, that has to be right by that. They can do their three days, it could be Tuesday to Friday. If that, that makes the process easier, that's, that's fine. But you gotta have that information to know, like, sheriff needs to report as he should. Gets the report, he says it every day, every morning, say, here's what it's at. And maybe the starting point is to share that information. If we all know what the, what, what you're up against, we work together to figure out something to make. Because we want to keep the, we want to keep the sexual predators in there, we want to keep the RFO, the repeated offenders in there. For me, it's a, it's a big issue, I'm starting, I say, the balance of salt. Balance of salt. In those counties that they, they, you know, if you're setting on, the balance of salt is one of those things, it's a difference, different hour. That one has got the, 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 the border and all that. We have the information, we know where it's at, we share that information, we're actually talking to each other like we should. Then plea offers change, judgments change, jail orders.
So what we're saying, E D, misdemeanor, not as the family violence, we could have a set bond.
We could, the county could adopt that program, you know, and hopefully it's something we do today, if the county can, can go to that system. Yes, there is nothing that says.
How come we haven't done that before? You've helped us a lot too.
Cooperation, I'll say it, because I think, hey, we're in a different position now than we have been in the past. Back when we had this meeting and everybody talked in a lot of manner, it's a different situation than we have had in the past. And so I, I think it's something that we could do, but we have to cooperate, because their office has to be comfortable with it. These gentlemen up here have to be comfortable with it, because it knows there's an element of it that it takes away from the magistrates. It takes away some of their ability to objectively look at things on a case-by-case basis. That he doesn't got, it has no blood, no breath, is that true the same way as the guy that, you know, puked on the trooper's shoes in the process? Magistrate where they're sitting there making the bond, hearing that stuff, makes, makes determinations about it. And if there's a set schedule, they don't get that anymore. So they would be, I would say, out of fairness and respect for the job that they do, they would be involved in that conversation as well.
So you could be the judge with the authority opening case that can dock the reset law schedule. Or I guess the counsel or judges cares to, they can dock the reset law schedule. But there is nothing in the law that says that a person has to see a J P before they come down. Most, most counties that I've practiced, I'll say many, please. Many counties that I've practiced here, he signs the rest of the warrant and puts that recommended bond on the file. Their bond is set, when they come into that jail, they can pull the law slip and make that bond that he set. They don't have to see a J P next month. There's nothing that says in the law that they have to see a J P before they come down. Three.
Sorry.
The court couples that have to see C Q match with the district, I'll say, have some issues.
Each of those programs has a, a whole thing that, that is, yeah, it's becoming a much bigger deal. And from the outside of the urban areas, urban areas push a lot of those people here. So there are not a Dallas, we do not use them here, so that has to be built in the process. The liaison that got to. It's involved in that too. They, they would be involved in drafting that plan.
And, and the other side of it, Craig, is I have always been in the impression, and I've never worked in jail before, but I've always been in the impression that that really doesn't help you all that much. Because if they're there for five minutes, they count as they bed back to that, they count on your, on your account.
We can hold them in the holding cell for twenty-four hours. So if you bring somebody out or on the wrist, you've got a reset bond, make, make the bond, we can put them in a holding cell, they'll, they can get out.
Okay, so they're never assigned a bed, so it doesn't go extra bed. Our, we'll make you our probation court, the bed chat, do not lower the holding anything else. All right, this is real life housing units. I've already gone to a, or I authorized DPS to go to cited for release on marijuana, misdemeanor marijuana. So if it's DPS traffic, it's only the traffic offense and misdemeanor marijuana, they're not important to you. We need to do that because their stress so thin. They have a policy that says they have to arrest no matter how small they are, one plus the D A authorized, so they're fine. So their stress so thin, they get one point. Their policy says they've got it, will give in, that's two-hour process, as it should be. So that's two-hour, so we have to just one-on-one ship right now. So they're not bringing you all in, or it's only misdemeanor marijuana. I'm fine with, with, you know, your offices going to that. I'm fine with every agency, all white suits, second letter, moving, citing the release of misdemeanor marijuana. What's your office policy?
What about if we, if we take every person that's in the jail now that has a plea date and move those plea dates to one date and have a massive plea date to get everybody out? Would that help?
It might help with misdemeanors. I'll tell you this, mister, we have, we have way, way less cases where you can go to trial in local cases. Back when I practiced here as a defense attorney, there was five hundred cases. There's way less now in felony court. I don't know how much help it would be on felony dates. I do think it, there are probable, like, these misdemeanors that we let out to that. If we didn't have a way to shut them all for bleach tomorrow, we probably could have just taken care of all the business tomorrow. We're done with them and they may not have to come back to court, because they're probably everyone who believes in time service there. Now, I'll tell you, sorry. There's been policy changes in the jail where defense lawyers are being told that they can't see their clients after ten A M. On court days, on felony court dates. A, I think that's a constitutional violation, like, parents are sued for that. B, that has caused us to have to have a lot of resets where, where that person then is in jail for certain things. I, I know what prompted it, I know there was a lawyer that was, was a lawyer, his staff, I'm physically thinking about it. I got the baton, but I ain't physically thinking about it. To slap that lawyer, I would do it. And he knows I've got the baton, because one day he has, halfway up the stairs, he's saying, they gonna pay you? So, so nobody should have treated for people that way? Is not, okay.
But that's just a case where we need to try to work together to resolve the problem.
I have been talking with Judge Mark at Great Creek about the turn of this patient. We're gonna turn it into exactly the way we do in person, this patient community. The attorneys are allowed to set it up, they'll be given a twenty-minute slot. And they're served out of the day, blocked off, being in counts. But that's what we're gonna go to hopefully in the next.
But that's what we're gonna go to hopefully in the next week. I'll send it together for them to, or you to complete a better brief, uh, so that we can. The issue is that every attorney comes to the jail to visit their inmates on the exact same day at the exact same time. While we're feeding one tropical port. So they have seven days a week that they can come visit, but they choose Tuesday and Thursday to tropical port during their lunchtime. To come see younger than they get upset because one attorney takes an hour. We only have one, we only have one road that the attorneys can use to visit.
How about video?
It would take use of the Palmer short period for years for them to do that. We just don't have space, it, it's very limited. But we're gonna go to the appointments dial for the attorneys, hopefully to solve that issue.
What, uh, only for this? Oh, you can't only do this. That's a huge problem to you.
We have to do something so that everybody has the same abilities. You've got one attorney that'll come in and spend three hours talking to five clients. Another attorney that comes in at the same time and they, they can't see.
And that's what's alternating for you, but, but when I've got nine hours of video for my client. The state guard types that says, I have to give him the opportunity if he wants it to watch every minute of those videos.
And, and I'm telling you, the, the attorneys that work with us, they're great. I'll just be straight over to Deborah from within, she calls me and she's like, hey, I've got X, X number of hours of video, um, can I come at this? She's fantastic, and if she comes, I make sure that I have a space for her, which does what she needs for the different shows. But then you have the others that three attorneys show up at the same time, I'll get them to lunch together. They came in and all expected to see their, I brought that.
And I don't believe any answer, I, I don't know the answer, I'm just saying.
So we would better obviously wait for your lawyer.
Yeah, call first.
What we'll do is we'll schedule a time slot, and if John comes in, they spend six hours watching videos, three big sets of play. Play, play leave, secretary gets there, it is, it takes four hours.
And I don't know if there is a ratio anywhere that says if you have this number of inmates, you have to have this number of attorney visitation slots available, rooms available. But back in Tyler, in the old days, when there was only those three rooms down, right central. You wait two hours to see your guy, uh, easy.
The problem is, is we've got, we've got one place for the visit. We've got courts running, we've got over five officers minimum, maximum running shift. We got two dimple court, couple feeding, we have everybody to bring around two good times. We can't have them on a daily table.
You can wait while you feed, you, you can, I mean, it doesn't have to be thirty seconds to, to have the guy up there. I'm just saying.
Well, that was the whole reason for that letter, saying that we're not gonna already visit for this month this time. Because of feeding.
Right, right, yeah, I would post on the door somewhere. Here's as long as we feed. I don't know what they are.
That's where, that's where all the ancients, she was though, she couldn't see for the feeding, and that's what threw her off in the back.
Well, she's a.
I know, but I'm just saying.
No, I'm sure she's not, they're, they're, you know, the other one yesterday, it's an answer. But you know, you have a lot of places where inmate feeding, six to six thirty, twelve, twelve thirty, you know, six to six thirty feeding, no business, go for it.
We can also just put up, we can make this to attorney inmates visits, first come, first served, and stay at home. One night, take ten hours, nobody else to stand by.
So they find the same position, just like.
And I'm just trying to figure out, I don't want this, and find, uh, them saying, y'all refuse me to see my client. Well, we did because the other attorney took ten hours.
So that's kind of what lawyers all pay you for. And what, what nobody's saying is what really is the question is, is it somewhere our federal court has been tasked to answer this question. We don't want to be that test case when they come and say, you're rejected for policy, okay or is not? Because federal court doesn't care, they randomly will make rules about whatever, and somehow, it's kind of similar to our legislation. We're gonna make the rule, and then someone new will figure it out how to make it work.
That's why I ask you, we're.
So this, this is like you say, you gotta do so much for recreation, you gotta provide healthcare, you gotta provide mental services, whatever else. You gotta provide twenty-four seven access to the lawyer. And if the lawyer's law abhended or has stutter, it takes forever to get his words out, it doesn't matter. If he wants to spend ten hours in there, that's his prerogative, he can spend ten hours in there. And if he gotta refuse the next guy, well, that's, that's the fault of the lawyer, that's not the fault of your policy.
Our jail room, so our jail visit, our attorney visitation room was available. I'm not gonna do, trust me, they'll start texting each other in there saying, get your ass out. And, and what I, what I would do, I would have the two judges send a letter to those on the quarter point wheel and say, this is the way it is. You know, and, and I want to hear from you that you went to visit your client at four thirty, the day you booked court. And you could only say so five, and somebody else was already in the room, so you need to tend this, don't want to hear. You know, because only most that listen to it, they.
That's an easy thing. So what's it gonna do to transport, get your guys to go back and forth to the crack? Well, that's something our legislature, we can do the overdown event that solves. So, so to be clear, we've got this, so that'd be. So, you know, when, when we've looked at numbers, we, we compare the numbers to the beds, but that's not really the comparison. It's how many beds should be actually filling that, because of.
Because that minimum security is disconnected from the main building, it takes an additional person, hardship. So jail standards, we're not making facility, you have to have five hardship, but to have a backdoor because it's not connected by working order, uh, have to have six. They don't want to work all the time, it's just.
That's on a recent judge, yeah, open that back door, since we got there in June, we had some mic issues, we never had six people per shift, I even hope.
So if you had no minimums, because I, I understand, or I think I understand, I would put it in your understanding of your classification stuff. If you had no minimums, does that make your classification? More flexible to the point that it was all this?
Are you talking about to the back jail?
No, for the main jail.
I got you, yeah.
Because can't all mediums and matches be together?
Medium and matches.
So if you had no minimums.
We had no minimum people there, yes, that would mop out, we can add up to like thirty, thirty more, thirty two.
So, but, but that would give you way more classification, way more flexibility, your housing, not classification. Right, that's what I'm saying, for housing, for, you, your housing would have more flexibility because you're, because everybody could be together.
If we do this and then open it and make this move, I'll have twenty additional minimums through beds and twenty-five additional medium maximum, and that's male only, that's one, open.
So is there a difference in what cell they can go to in addition to who they can be with?
Yes, their classification.
So I know a minimum, I know you have to be minimumized too, you've got to be minimumized for the building.
Yes.
Ask me minimum. Is there any beds in the main building that can, that are only allowed to hold? Okay.
Adjust that.
And, and how many male beds are in the main? One twenty-five?
Our max is one ninety-two, the back bed, the back facility is forty-eight, without matching.
So you would have one twenty, one hundred twenty-five beds that you could just, I'm sure it makes people, uh. If only you had three.
And that's one thing that, the money that we've received from this, what is it, American Rescue Plan? Is that any jail, uh, building or addition or improvement is covered. I mean, you can spend that money, and that's one thing we, uh, Gary Adams and him has already contacted me, they're doing it in Hopkins County. Is, and you've heard the discussion about that building not being attached to the main building. That, those funds that we're, we're about, that we've already received half of it, uh, can be used to tie that minimum security to the, to the, to the jail. Well, you, it can be. You don't think so? Oh, yeah.
I, I've been insulted three different jail centers about that, attaching the two buildings, and it's not been solved. It, it may create a bigger problem. Now, if you're wanting to reinforce that.
Yes.
So that it can be medium maximum.
But.
That's a possibility, but connecting the two buildings will be.
Oh, yeah, you're gonna have to reinforce the building.
Yeah.
I mean, you're gonna have to go in, but I mean, it is a construction project that could be undertake, uh, undertook with, with these, with these funds. Uh, that we, we're waiting on guidance, but I, I mean, I said in a meeting with county judges, and they said. You can use them funds to build your, your jail, you know, a new facility, you know, if you had a, if you wanted to build, add on to your jail. You could use it, and it would be covered, those expenses would be covered, but yes, you would have to go in and reinforce, uh, for maximum, a medium.
And, and all of yours.
Do I?
You use that money, drugs to have lawyer forms?
I don't know why you could.
Yeah, I think you could.
Yeah.
I, I think you could. Yeah, and that's where you wouldn't.
We're not grandfathered into where we can stay just video.
Actually, the jail magistrate was there about two weeks ago and asked, well, we're not good.
Most likely, the county should never have five, but almost only have three.
They can grandfather in, so there's a lot of jail standards and building still, when this, uh, rule was implemented, and there are some that are grandfathered into where they don't have to. Which is, we don't, we don't hold them to that category.
Tyler doesn't have in-person visitation ten years.
Right, their low risk doesn't have to.
No, they're, they're downtown, they're, they're hybrids, but.
Oh, yeah, they're not. They posted the notification, this, now, once.
Yeah, they've charged.
No, three COVID, three COVIDs, the only gap, if family wanted to visit a back, a, a inmate at the downtown jail in Smith County. They go out to low risk, they went to a little room, they sat in front of the camera, and they talked to the person who was downtown.
That's a good idea, so my house, sir.
Right, exactly, you're talking, that is still considered in person because the visitor is on the property of the facility technically.
No shit, what's wrong with you at the parking lot? There's some cameras.
Okay.
We've got lots of things we can do, that's for sure.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question?
You can.
What, what's full staff at the jail? If you were fully staffed, you could run everything you got, what's that number?
Not for shit.
Thirty-six, what you got right now? Twenty? Now, your, your, your jail staff right now is not ten?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, and, and we're budgeting for thirty-six, ten, whatever you said, full staff, is that full? So if you pay that overtime, if we do that and pay that overtime, it's, it's, it's not full time and a half because you're, if you had sixteen minus thirty-six. You had that number more than four, you'd be paying that anything.
So was?
Yes. So my next question is to Dan, Dan, what we have to do to, for a certain period in time that we could pay this, this staff out there? Their money, their time and a half money, on their check, on their ever two week check, to, until? All this great conversation that we've had today, we can work out these issues, uh, with all the good ideas y'all come up with.
So your two policies on overtime, two A eleven and two A twelve, only talk about overtime going to comp time. But the last paragraph of two A twelve says, Van Zandt County shall retain the right to buy back all or part of its employees' unused comp time. By paying the employee for that time at the employee's current regular rate, because it goes in as comp time at one and a half. Van Zandt County shall retain the right to pay all or part of the overtime work in any work week by paying to that overtime at one and a half, the employee's regular rate. Which it went in at that. And then you also have our, pretty much, we can do whatever we want clause, which says. The county with the Google and Commissioner's Court retains the right to modify, change, suspend, cancel, or interpret any of its personnel or benefits policy practice. At any time without advance notice, in its sole discretion, without having to give cause or justification or consideration to any of it. So you can do this. And my concern this morning was with the Department of Labor, and that one inspector, Sylvia King. And she kept saying that you don't want to pay out overtime in every paycheck, as opposed to their paycheck to fluctuate all over the place. And we asked repeatedly, can you show me that in hard print? And she couldn't, and I spent hours this morning and afternoon looking over everything, trying to find that, maybe a dozen phone calls, never got to speak to anybody. So there's nothing that says we can't do that.
Well, why wouldn't you pay it out as earned, Dan?
Because it, it will kill your budget.
Well, no, not accordingly, if we've got those, yeah.
For him, in this situation, because of where we are today, but if I paid out your folks as it's earned. It would hurt your budget.
Yes.
And that's why the policy is the way it is, but you remember eight months ago when we were talking about this whole thing? I said, at some point, I'm gonna bring to you the policy that we're no longer gonna carry comp time, that we pay out every time. And that's based on us being in a fiscally better position, so that will still come one day, but we need to do, we need to live by the policies. For everybody else, and in this case, we're in a special situation, we need to adjust, so yes, you can do it.
Thank you.
Steve, have you considered part-time jailers? There's a lot of jailers living in this county that work in other counties and other places that might like having a part-time site. Steve, have you considered part-time jailers? There's a lot of jailers living in this county that work in other counties and other places that might like having a part-time side job.
Well, the only problem, I guess, the only problem there is we've got, we've got to know every week, and we've got enough people to keep that back jail open, because you get a part-time from another county, from another agency, and they say, hey, I work next Friday. Something comes up, something happens to their facility, they say, no, this comes first, you're not for a year. Then we're stuck, we can't, we, we don't have anybody running that jail.
To add to that, we pay substantially lower.
And that's why I said it's a part-time job, or something they're doing on the side, not regular. I don't expect to steal from the other county, but we might get some use.
We get, we get out of patients. We said, I helped for days, okay, that's great, because those people days, those people nights, it's certainly their duties. Uh, they quit, they weren't with them, I was next to. A new person living today, so. So, some of the officers would get, they were like, I was. So, they're just, they're just experienced, they're, it's, it's a new person, they're like that.
Well, example, when we first came here, Hopkins County ended up selling. And they're, we had to pay them. Our guys made thirteen eighty-one hour labor make, how much? Twenty thirty. So when we went to pay them. Yep, just crazy amount of money. So you ask somebody like that from Hopkins County, they're, they'll say, because we tried to get someone to come in and help us out part-time after county could pay them. You know, no disrespect, but I'm like, well, I work part-time or overtime here. At twenty-three dollars an hour plus time to add versus coming down here and working for y'all for thirteen dollars an hour. So. Yeah, you gotta take. It's fish.
So, yeah, I think.
Back to, how many do we have budgeted? How many jail positions do you have budgeted right now?
It's somewhere over thirty.
We got thirty, and we got nineteen employees now. So you, you can take the money out of the budget that you're not gonna hire these employees right now until you use this ninety days up, and come back and see what, what goes on then.
We've had the last twenty-sixth first years, the last six and a half months, we've had the other twelve or fourteen positions just sitting there, so all that money, this budget is just sitting there.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I will say, fully, I just that we're getting it, we're hiring on. Very, very dedicated, it's just, when you explain comp time. Hey.
We're considering comp time, now correctional jails.
Yeah.
Thank you, where we are, we didn't come down since this time. So there's one in one of the jails that reported some hours asking a question about a spirit employee. The answer is, oh, gosh, it was always committed, don't call them, they'll come in. Over job, I'm working, yeah. I have four, it's me and else. We went to that, oh, catch out all of the.
We, we're not required to cash out all of them, but next month is the cash out month, and everybody, our, our practice has been, if you're, uh, law enforcement, you're a four eighty guy, we pay down that, half of that whole G M T report. That has been our practice, it's not mandated, so we would not be mandated to pay anybody else out at the time. We would ask for that, we're just trying to. It's practice, huh?
Yeah.
So you're trying to.
No.
No, actually.
It's not hard.
I don't believe that we are at the point, going to death inside. That's, it's all definitely with the law enforcement, but once.
Yeah.
And the quality of death is more limited, that's the people that's card, see. See, we'll be closer on. That's people that require, uh, county card. Henderson County, some of those. And some random. But the plot won't be right with the cap, it's completely for the voice, I told you. And so we're just, we call them out. And.
Just in case we need it.
Yeah, yeah, it's just in case. I think that's a request. So the, so the county ju, uh, the county judge, the sheriff, uh, is requesting to uh, enter local agreement with Franklin County to house Van Zandt County inmates. Uh, we do believe that overtime there would cover, we, we may not have to use that, but it is a vital.
And we don't just have it as a back plan, we don't think we're, we want to use, unless we actually have it all, just take the person's, their call, they have them.
Yeah.
Well, I'm at the motion, we enter into an interlocal agreement with the, the Franklin County, and that, the, in that motion that we authorize the county judge to sign that agreement.
Okay, and that, that agreement would be forty-five dollars per day. And that's what they're, what they're Franklin County, we, we're paying, other than thirty. And then this would be forty-five. You've heard the motion, is there a second?
There is.
Okay, second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions or discussion about entering into a local agreement with Franklin County?
This is just there in case we need it.
It's a one year, it expires at the end of December, uh, unless you give a sixty day notice, you can get out.
One year.
End of this year, yeah, and, and expires, uh, December thirty-first, I looked at that, see if there's an expiration date, don't.
So that'll give us Franklin and Henderson to work with?
No.
Henderson's our first associate with this.
Yeah. This is just a backup. Okay, we have motion, second, any questions, discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried, will be signed now. Uh, item number four, discuss and consider, we've tied them all together. Uh, the discuss and consider correctional officers receiving overtime compensation being paid. Uh, you heard what they said was that they believe that would help get some people in, and that my offset, and y'all, do y'all have the comparison chart, Sandy ran some numbers?
I've seen it, I don't think.
Yeah. Comparison of the numbers of the two officers, uh.
Everybody, all, everybody has the general overtime rights, or just people when they're working. When they work on their schedule today.
And they work on the schedule day off.
Is that on work on leave? Now, it's a great, um, yeah, I'll have a spreadsheet, if I, whatever I.
That's, it would be very difficult for us to do, because it would just be better if any overtime that they work, you let us pay it for this period of time, otherwise you're gonna create a lot of work that stretches out.
They'll say, if, if they're working on more than forty hours, it's out of their schedule somewhere. It's off of it.
And, and I was right there that, uh, this be for a ninety day period, and then ninety days you come back in.
Just about put us on a twenty-two budget point.
So for ninety days, uh, any overtime, we pay, I'm gonna have, one paycheck.
Right now, we have got, it's higher, who's waiting on the slices, you read, back there, he worked in Smith County. I know who he is, he's, he's a good worker, we got three more besides him.
I have two from the jail school in. So they'll be hard on us for.
So we're, we're, like Sharon said, we're getting, we're getting there real close in control, our dispatch school. Ninety days. I go, if we can keep them and get some good ones, ninety days, we'll have enough in place, we can run the jail, but we're gonna call it.
I don't probably have it right now, it's like someone else, that was the shorthand. I think once we get past this, um. There's two holidays in there, is that, is that?
Well.
No.
In a week where there's a holiday, that does not count towards overtime. So for a forty hour a week employee, the week of July fifth, they would work four days and have the holiday, but if they worked a five day and had the holiday, it's not counted as comp time. It's only gonna happen one time.
A week, it's, yeah, we're good.
Is there a motion?
Tell me.
Okay, got a motion to, uh, pay the correctional officers, uh, overtime compensation for a ninety day period?
Yes, sir.
For ninety day period, and it will be reevaluated. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, uh, Commissioner LaPran. Any other questions or discussion? I don't know, it'd be ninety days of what's basic.
We got, we got plenty of time, it's gonna be ninety days, we got plenty of time to reset anything.
Ninety days from today.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Is there any way, because I do think that, that, that bond, the schedule, the bond schedule would work. I don't see that the JPs would. I think the majority of the JPs would be in favor of that, because it's just gonna take work off them. It's gonna make your job easier in a short amount of time that they stay out there at, at the jail. I, 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 I mean, when I was JP, I would have certainly agreed to it, uh, I don't know how we need to set that up, or how we would develop a plan for that. Would, and, and let me ask you, would that hip your population? That's what, I think everything we can do, it may not help a lot, but if we help a little bit, never did. I wouldn't.
Maybe, I think the first, uh, so, so every county, believe it or not, has a, a council judge. Just first of all. And ultimately, I think it's. So we would have to know if Jeff Martin is okay with it, and there may not be a lot of dispelments that, that people apply to, but still on council judges issues, he gets a go, so I think it would be. I understand it's. I understand. First. They are. I would hope they will see input from all of us as to whether, where. That on.
Okay.
Will you, will you do that, Judge Martin?
Sure, absolutely.
And as two, two of us, if, if we have a different code, if we vote different ways, then we'll say if we have the Congress. I'm pretty sure I can take that.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Oh, no.
Got a motion by Commissioner. Melton, second by Commissioner Pearson, all in favor, say aye. We are adjourned.